Next item, please.
Next item is citizen participation. Citizens wishing to address the board on agenda and non-agenda item reaction can submit a virtual blue card that will be posted on the district's website on Monday, September 13th, 2021, from 4:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. or in person by 7:00, 10:00 p.m. by submitting a blue card to the board secretary. The board may not be in a position to respond to non-agenda items. Therefore, speakers should not anticipate an immediate response to their comments or questions. For the benefit of all concerned, do not mention the names of students or school district employees. Please keep your comments as brief as possible. The board president reserves the right to limit times.
I have set a timer for two minutes and 45 seconds. At that time, I'll just ask people to begin closing comments. And the other thing I want to let people know is personally, I'll be taking some notes from the comments, so we'll be able to give answers possibly on some of these things after we have all of the comments completed. Go ahead with your first blue card.
We do have the physical blue cards, and they're all non-agenda items. So the first one is about QR code, and it's from Mr. Greg Andrews of Dearborn.
Hello, I just had a question on the QR code scanning they're doing at the lunchrooms for the kids, for the lunch tables. Who does that actually go to? I mean, like when it's their phone scanned in, does it go to just the school or throughout the state or the county, or do you know?
That would be one that we can answer when we get through everything.
Okay.
Thanks.
Next blue card is titled Common Sense by Mr. Steve Norrie of Dearborn.
Good evening. I just want to read something to you about a young lady in Westland. Her name's Shayna Brent. I want to read this to you because she posted it. It goes, "Just had to pick up my kid from kindergarten because he coughed and had to blow his nose. Guys, it was 96 degrees last week and 67 when I sent him to school today after cutting off air last night." Of course, she reacts. They took his fever, which was fine. He's, excuse me, he took his fever and he said, and he, well, then it was fine. When they went to pick him up, he was in a room connected to the office all alone until I got there. We walked home, no coughing. Then Sid and he asked his mom, or he said, "They said I can bring him back with a negative note or quarantine for 10 days." Said, "No sooner than when we walked out the door, my baby says to me, 'Mom, am I in trouble?'" Now, here's a five-year-old kid, and excuse me, I'm going to get emotional, that is getting sent home because he coughed and he blew his nose. When do we start using common sense? He's five years old. This guy has to have a relationship with his teachers. What kind of relationship he's going to give with his teachers if they're quarantining for 10 days for coughing? Every one of you, I bet, cough all day long, sneeze sometimes. Are you guys going to quarantine if you guys do that? No, you're not. We've got to use a little common sense. You know, I'm not all for masking, but that's immaterial. We're talking about little kids here, five and six years old. Please, guys, let's use some common sense. All I'm asking is if this was in Westland, please don't do this to our children here because it's wrong. It's very, very wrong. Second of all, my children go to Esalen Ford, and many of the kids that I have talked to here, they have not said the Pledge of Allegiance once since they've been in school in this is their third week. Can we make a, do we say the Pledge of Allegiance every day before school starts at Esalen Ford? Is that so hard to do? Is it? Can you guys, somebody answer me? Is that hard to do? Can we do that? Yes or no? Don't look at me like I'm stupid, please. Answer my question. Can we do that? Yes or no?
I made a note of it, that we'll talk about it at the end.
Our next comment is titled Money Masking, Mrs. Lorraine Sadko.
Hello. I need to see you guys' faces. I can't hear very well, and I can't hear you guys very well, so I have to use everything that I can because you guys are all muffled, okay? I'm trying to hear everything that you're saying, but I hope I got it down. I want to ask a question if you guys get any extra money for making sure these kids are masked. Extra grants, anything like that? No? What's your name?
Are you?
Are you asking?
Are you asking personally?
Oh, no, is it in a school? No.
That's why I was confused. That's what the confused looked like.
Right, as a school, as a corporate, as a district, as a entity. Do you get extra, do you get grant money? Do you get extra money to make sure these kids are masked?
We get money from the different grants, and we have had a portion of that go towards purchasing the masks.
Purchasing a mask.
But I wouldn't say that we get anything additional just for that. It's part of the federal money that's already been sent to us.
Okay, so then, why do they have to wear a mask? That's another question. As in personal, if you guys want to answer it personally.
Well, we can go through that one when we're all done with the comments, but that was covered earlier. That is a county mandate.
I tell them, I can't understand, and if I can't see your face, I could almost understand over in this corner, but I can't. So I don't know what was, I tried to get the best I could. And how does this work, the bus system with the mask? I'm a bus employee. And what we were told is they have to be masked on the bus. The bus is a different entity than the school from where I'm at. I don't know about Dearborn, but they're different. It's a whole separate place. If they do not wear the mask, we tell the teacher at that school, then you guys deal with it. How would you deal with it? And do you guys make, do you guys have to make sure they're masked on the bus? Or is it none of your concern? You don't care? The teachers walk them out? Do they have to have the mask on during, before, and after standing at the bus stop? That kind of thing?
We'll discuss that one then when we're all done. Thanks.
Do I have a little bit more time?
Honestly, I forgot to start the timer. Sorry. Can you do one more?
One more question.
Perfect.
Okay. And if I get any time, I'd like to give it to anybody else. As in, we're talking about all the good things happening. Do you realize that a mask takes 20% of your oxygen? You're asking kids to come stay with 20% less oxygen. You guys are getting it right now. We don't do this in hospitals. They give you oxygen if you're going to die. You want to get as much oxygen because 20%. You're working at 80% right now. You've been in here an hour or so, and you go test your levels and see where you're at. Maybe you have better breath than I do, or they do, better lungs, whatever, but it's been proven 20%. Give or take, it's a 20%. Now, you're asking these kids to do this and learn and listen and, of course, meditate because, you know, these little boys, they can't get going around and have fun or nothing. They've got to meditate, okay? You can't do that to boys. You're taking their oxygen, you're taking their ability, what they're supposed to do. You guys are boys, men, males. Do you want to sit in the class, just sitting there? No, you want to be out doing something. The hands-on is great. But if you realize that that is a key thing, there is no oxygen coming at that 20%, you're not going to get a full thing out of a kid. You're not going to get full comprehension. And even boys before, it is hard. I homeschool. I know it is. I homeschool a lot of kids, okay? Been a teacher, administrator, nurse, all that stuff. I've been the lead. I've been the disin, everything. I've hit everything already, and I know it's hard to keep boys quiet. Girls too, all the time, okay? It's just a different thing. But to do this in school, you're taking away part of their God-given right, I guess you say, to breathe, right? To breathe as much as they can breathe. But you want to do this, 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 and this. Just realize that this is 20%. Please go look it up. This is my first board meeting, so this won't be my last, and I'll figure out names, and that's what I'm trying to do right now. It's my first one. I'm not going anywhere, so I would like some answers, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Next card is titled Masks and Teaching Curriculum, Mrs. Stephanie Butler.
Actually, I'm on another card, too. You could skip that one.
Okay. Next item is school, fully on vaccines, Mr. Billy Salami of Dearborn.
How you doing, folks? I just wanted to cover basically what we have coming or foreshadowing on these masks and what they're leading to. So it's pretty obvious now to all of us what's happening. So we're hearing from Fauci and from federal government that the vaccines will be ready here in, I don't know, a few weeks for kids, five and up. So I think what's going to happen is we're going to say that you can take the masks off if you get the vaccine. So the problem with that is if you think a lot of people haven't taken the vaccine that are adults, you're going to be shocked at how many don't take it, as, how many will not vaccinate their child. Now, this is to inform the parents, not to inform you, but informed consent needs to be done the right way. Informed consent is not to be fear mongered, say things that are untrue, say things that are illegal, saying things that a parent is, has to do. So for example, Fauci today said, "Oh, well, kids are always vaccinated in schools. They have to follow a certain amount of vaccinations," which is not true. You can get an exemption, parents. This is for you. We get an exemption for my son, who's allergic to vaccines, for regular vaccinations we have for years. In fact, that's available in every state but New York and California. So if you don't want to give this experimental vaccine to your child, you don't have to. You should not be fear mongered, coerced, pushed into it, or be told that you have to because you don't. The law protects you if you choose not to. And also, just for all the parents, please look into this. Please. Now, for adults, they make their own decision. God bless you if you take the vaccine. If you don't take the vaccine, God bless you as well. We stand with you. We're not anti-vaxers. But do your homework. Israel is a great place to look for what's going on with the vaccines for 12-year-olds to 16-year-olds, 17-year-olds. Myocarditis is one of the big ones that you hear. Actually, it's happening all over the country here. They'll play it off and say, "Well, that's not a big deal." Yes, it is a big deal. A 12-year-old should not have myocarditis. And no, it doesn't just go away. They might say it's a small percentage of them. That's not true. Parents, in order for us to combat this, you have to give your consent, but you've got to give your consent by actually doing your homework and actually protecting your child and actually understanding that you have rights. And no is okay. And if the masks are going to be used, as a caveat to say, if your kid's vaccinated, they can take the mask off, which I'm sure we're going to be saying that soon, like everything else we've done, we're not going to be too happy about that. So we're going to tell you, you're not going to treat kids any differently.
If you could please make your closing statement?
Yes. Where this is headed, it seems like it's not going to turn around. But I ask you, gentlemen, Mr. Berry, I know you personally. Adel, I know you personally. Mr. Medico, I have the utmost respect for you and how you ran things. One of you guys have the balls to stand up and do something, okay? Because we're sick of it. We're sick of it. We're asking nicely, but these kids, 188 kids, have died at 19 months from one to 14 years old. 188. 700 kids drowned this summer, okay? So we're making a big deal out of something that's not. At least for these children, let them go to school, not a penitentiary. Let them go to school with peace of mind. And that's enough of this. Like, we need to stand up for them, and we expect you guys to. We really do just somebody to do something. So thank you.
Thank you.
Next card is titled An Appropriate Teacher Behavior, Ms. Stephanie Butler, Ms. Crystal Paulson, and Ms. Zainah Hammond. Sorry if I mispronounced your name.
I'm switching the timer to about eight minutes and 45 seconds since you're all in there together.
Okay, I had a different point to start, but I'm just going to start on this point. Here I have a mask exemption from a medical doctor, from my neurologist, and I carry this around with me now, and I just want you to hear what my medical doctor, my neurologist, who wears masks, who has had COVID, not sure if he's vaccinated. Avoid mask can induce or increase my migraines due to CO2 increase. That is written from a medical doctor to me as a grown woman, okay? He's admitting on paper that that's what it does while you all are fighting for our little children to be masked with no ventilation. I just wanted to point that out. Secondly, there's a new policy, and I don't know that I have it in here, 7345 or something, your new social media communications policy that Dearborn implemented. So I'm just going to make a couple of points about that. School leaders have a responsibility and arguably a moral obligation to protect students in the learning environment from the inappropriate uses of social media. Failure to do so weakens the critical bond of trust that links school to the community. And with that, I am going to just read some excerpts from a couple of social media accounts of teachers, public teachers who publicly state that they are teachers on very public and their own personal page forum. However, the pages were not locked down. They were open to the public, and this is how we found it. There are two board members that were indeed, in fact, friends on this Facebook profile who were watching these posts be made and who did not stand up and say anything. Reminder, as we get into hotter weather, she's not dressed like a slut, you just think like a rapist. I'm always amazed that people still trot out that bigot as a paragon of leadership and then sigh wistfully for the good old days of segregation. Are there really that many willfully ignorant people? Wait, never mind. We elected Trump, so. This thread is depressing. It still surprises me that we have so many Trump-loving bigots in Dearborn. Shouldn't they have all moved to Canton and Brighton after Hubbard died? Sigh. It's times like this I wish I believed in a God so I could beg him to spare me from people that think death is the only consequence of COVID. Sheeple is my signal word to stop arguing with you. Take your QAnon believing anti-public school supporting beliefs and stuff them. $5 says this guy voted for the current fascist in office and was opposed to the brick bond. They're watching video, YouTube videos made by idiots. All the ignorant anti-maskers in Dearborn decided to meet up, eh? And Nancy, the anti-CR2 racist too. Absolutely shameful that they shouted down trustee, and I won't say the name. And oh my God, an anti-critical race theory idiot too.
And she was elderly. She took time out of her day. She worried about our children, and she came here. She addressed every one of you. She did it politely, and she did it respectfully. That's a teacher that was speaking about an elderly lady.
Okay. And then this is from another teacher, also in our school district. I'm not going to teach critical race theory this year. I'm going to teach the debate about whether we should teach controversial subjects. For example, CRT, laughing face. Kneeling to protest violence equals disrespecting the flag. Using the flag to beat a cop to death on the steps of the Capitol equals patriot. White privilege is the ability to pass laws that prevent everyone from learning history that makes white people feel uncomfortable. USA is the only country that bases its educational funding on property taxes, ensuring poorer children will get a poorer education, thus perpetuating poverty. It's a way a veiled aristocratic system keeps power to itself. It won't change until we change it. And I'm not going to show the picture of this, which I was going to because it involves a student on social media. So-and-so and I want to remind you that GSA meets every Friday in so-and-so's classroom. #GSA, #LGBTQ, okay? GSA, by the way, there's two different definitions. One's Gender Studies Association, two is gay, lesbian, something, okay? Here is a tag for GSA. As an elementary educator, queer visibility is important to me because for many of my students, I will be their first contact with the LGBTQIA community. Posting a picture, a profile picture of them wearing a mask, saying, "I wear this so I'm not mistaken for a Trump supporter." And the title is, "When You Get a Cool New Mask and You Keep Wearing It to the Grocery Store, But No One Will Fight With You." Then I have some excerpts of pictures of books that are in this person's classrooms that upon looking at the titles and the insides of the books are actually critical race theory books. This is what's happening behind our eyes in Dearborn Public Schools, and the parents have no clue, no clue. So with that...
So I'm reading another teacher.
Can you two switch positions so you're closer to the mic? Thanks.
Welcome to B-Hall between second and third hour, the Oshkosh Suicide Squad. So the comments put a hula hoop on all of them. Emoji you, laughing face. Can you imagine the tangle in B-Hall? Didn't see that one coming at all. We as a society appear to be asking kids to do things most adults won't. I didn't want to have my kids attend virtually, but it may come to that. Sorry. And then there's another one. Why would anyone think our high schoolers would behave any different or more responsibly? From my shoulder to my grip is 22.5 inches. Now, all I need is a 50-inch stick to help enforce distancing. And then the other one. Remember when I said every white person is racist? This is a perfect compliment to that. And if you think you don't want and need to read it, you are exactly the person who needs to read it. I implore you, it's lengthy, but it's worth it. How I discovered I am white. And then, as you know, some of my, you guys know where my husband works, and I will not publicly state it, but I will tell you this. I've seen the good in teachers, and I've also seen the good in the administration as well, especially the coaches of last year. But to refer to all teachers as superheroes when my husband did not have a chance to sit on his butt at home for over a year. He had to go to work. We had to change our garage into a decontamination center. He lost a very close friend due to COVID. Those are heroes. They didn't turn their back. They ran to the people who needed help. And then, again, a board member is supposed to be unbiased. You're supposed to have an open mind. But you guys knew that she was opening the links and that people were commenting and sending comments, and knowing that the possibility of it coming from a parent, we don't know.
I'm just going to read quickly a few comments that a certain teacher made on the Board of Education page and underneath the commenting section, besides calling parents stupid idiots. Just a reminder for tomorrow, the next Dearborn School Board meeting is Monday, August 23rd, and based on previous meeting, it is very likely that the anti-maskers will be out in force. The commenting forum will be, for the meeting will be open on Monday, August 23rd from 4:00 to 7:15. Mark your calendars and get your statements ready. Comments will be read at the meeting, and this way we can avoid getting breathed on by the hordes of anti-maskers. The next day. Okay, it's time to go. The forum is open. Leave a comment supporting a mask mandate for Dearborn Public Schools so the school board isn't overwhelmed by the psycho anti-mask flat-earthers. Another, "Oh, look, the anti-school bond people don't like the libraries either. What a surprise." There's so many here. And this is being communicated between parents, the teacher, and whoever monitors the news feed during the meetings is also reading some of the things that these teachers are posting, and it's actually going on now, if you look at the live. I don't feel that teachers should be communicating in this way because there are students, our students, you know, on there as well, looking and reading and seeing what the teachers, how the teachers are behaving. It's not a pass for anybody to behave like this, whether it's a parent or a teacher, but especially a teacher because their position is very sensitive.
Texas won't force a 12-year-old to wear a mask at school, but they'll force her to have a effing baby. Here's the truth about America. Our country is racist. Our economy is rigged. Our healthcare system is broken. Our government is controlled by corporation and billionaires, and when you fight back and challenge the status quo, you're labeled divisive.
I apologize. I thought you were going to be the last speaker. Can you wrap everything up, please?
Yep, that we're at eight minutes? Okay. Thank you to the idiot anti-maskers and the idiot anti-vaxers and the idiot Trump supporters who are doing their best to not only kill as many people as they can, but also to destroy public education in this country. Why would anyone in their right mind become a teacher or administrator or a school nurse or a social worker or run for the school board when they are making our schools the literal front line in their war of ignorance and stupidity? That, by the way, is sharing picture of kids as well. So I wanted to go back to this board meeting, citizens' participation, because as you guys were sitting there telling us, "Oh, look, we have so many people on the other side too, not just your side, whatever side that is," those were people who were being encouraged and coached that don't belong to our schools, calling in at the request of a teacher to make it sound like there were so many four-masked parents. What a sham, what a tragedy to these kids that this takes place. And I'm under the impression, or, you know, we were told, that teacher only got probation because that teacher has a right to their First Amendment. That is true only to a certain degree, and I will give you laws that can cite that in cases. They have First Amendment, you know, freedom, I guess, to a certain point, not when you have students on your Facebook or your Instagram pages, not when your page is open to the public, and not when you're putting these things on a very public and open group page.
Not when you're representing Dearborn Public Schools while doing it.
Can I please say something, then I'm done?
Please make it quick.
Yes. Ms. Dabell, she's at Smith, and I absolutely love Ms. Dabell. I find her as a mentor. And the biggest thing that I've learned from her, she would always say, "It takes the village to get these kids through." And I honestly, in my heart, I believe it because it takes all of us. Right now, as a parent, I could probably be doing more. I'll be the first one to say it. I get mad at you guys. I get frustrated. But I can, I'm looking at you guys tonight. Our village is failing our kids. Our kids. That's not fair because all of us can do better. And please, please think about our kids and please do the right thing because obviously this has been said in social media, and no one found anything wrong with it.
Thank you.
Next comment is titled Critical Race Theory by Mr. Nicholas Ken of Dearborn.
Hello, this is my first meeting, and I just want to make sure that, you know, there is some talk or banning this critical race theory or this 1619 project that really is basically based on racism and lies, both of them. And I would just like to make sure that the Dearborn School District has been talking about this or thinking about this as your part of your curriculum. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next comment is about masks. I believe, Ms. Zainah Hammond, you already spoke, so I bet you had a separate card. Next comment is by Mrs. Joanne Mackey about COVID-19 school protocols. Uh, next comment is by Mrs. Joanne Mackey about COVID-nineteen school protocols.
Good evening, all. Um, I wanted to touch base um on something that Dr. Malaico mentioned earlier. Uh, my child was identified as a close contact in one of the Dearborn Public Schools. And unfortunately, she had to quarantine for ten days even though she was symptom-free, and she tested PCR negative on day six of the quarantine. After talking to multiple administrators and not being able to get anywhere, um it's just a frustration process, very frustrating process for me as a parent. But after digging and maybe researching some information that came directly from the Dearborn um uh public school site, the roadmap to uh the virtual binder for schools, um in addition to some amendments that were uh made by the Dearborn, Duane County Health Department, which was updated August the seventeenth, that administrators were not aware of. Um, and also some exceptions and exclusions that were also revised and updated on August fifth with the definition of what close contact is and what the exceptions and exclusions were um for that definition. So under these documentation, which I did email and send out to multiple administrative staff, my daughter basically was punished for something that she had no choice of. Basically, because she was seated, assigned seat in a classroom that put her less than three to six feet of social distancing from the student who tested positive. Uh, as a result of that, she had to quarantine. I totally understand and get that the Dearborn District is overpopulated. I have three schools in the district, uh three students in the district. They have three different public schools. And I know for a fact that the classroom sizes are large. I get the challenges. I get COVID. I know these are uncharted waters that everybody's trying to get, navigate through as best we can. I totally get it. But on the flip side of it, if we're going to be held accountable with what the Wayne County Health Department requires of us for quarantining, as a district, as a district, you also need to be held accountable for the COVID-nineteen um mitigation plans that are not implemented in the schools, such as the industrial-sized fans that were purchased and given to the district that need to be put in the gym, in the, in the hallways, in the cafeterias, mitigation laws for um proper ventilation in the school systems, et cetera. So basically, what I'm trying to say is, uh, we've had a year and a half to plan for the overcrowdedness of those kids being back in the schools. And there are at least thirty kids in each classroom, um at least where my daughter goes. That's the the average number of students in the classroom. These students are not seated three to six feet apart. Understandable because of the large number of students in the classroom, that's very difficult to do. However, where are the partitions that need to be placed in between students at a desk? Where are the fans that need to be in the classroom that use proper ventilation to help with that? Where is the district's responsibility and accountability for following through with what Wayne County Health Department required of you to do in addition to holding us parents reliable and responsible for what we need to do if our children have to quarantine? So it's, it's very frustrating for me as a parent. I'm all about accountability. If my child made a wrong choice because of something she was, she didn't put a mask on properly or she did something wrong, she's going to be held accountable for that choice that she made. But she sat home for ten days when that was unnecessary based on guidelines that the Dearborn Public Schools roadmap, twenty-twenty-one virtual binder of schools, page six, said she didn't have to quarantine. Um, Appendix A revised on August fifth from the Wayne County Health Department, which excluded her under exclusions for classrooms K through twelve. There's an exclusion there that would have not, she would not have to have quarantined. In addition to that, from the Wayne County Health Department, um uh on August the seventeenth, which went out to all Dearborn Public Schools, in addition, in accordance to these things that should have been implemented in the, in the district, she should not have to have quarantined. Yet she was consequence for someone, someone else's irresponsibility. So what can we do different? Are we able to implement these COVID mitigation plans that need to be put in place? It's nice for them to be on paper. However, where are they implemented in the schools? That's what I would like to know. We do have funding. The school district got a lot of funding from the federal government to plan and implement these things in the Dearborn Public Schools. Why aren't I?
Could you please wrap up your comments?
Yes, I just would like to know. You don't have to answer me now, but I would like answers to, I would like action. I don't want, I'm not looking for an apology. I'm not looking for sympathy. I would like actions to be taken in the schools to see these COVID mitigation plans implemented physically. Because our goal is to protect our kids, right? That's the ultimate goal, is to protect our kids. We, as parents, have responsibility, but as administrators, as a whole district, your responsibility is to the kids first. Thank you for your time.
Ms. Mackey, your comment's very similar to one that we had received online. Did you fill out an online card as well?
No, I emailed, I sent an email to um Mrs. Harris. I sent an email to Mr. Mashur, and I sent an email to the other administrators who I spoke to verbally.
That's fine. I just wanted to make sure we weren't going to read the same thing that you.
No, no, no. I sent the email with detailed information and documentation of what I'm talking about from the Wayne County Health Department, and you're able to look at that if, if anybody has even opened that email.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you. We have another comment titled Special Ed, Please Access to Cameras, from um Ms. Sam Lookman of Dearborn.
Hi, my name is Samra Lookman. I am a parent and stakeholder in the Dearborn Public Schools. Some of the social media comments that I heard today were kind of disturbing. I know one of them, one of the teachers also had hashtag Antifa in her comments, too. But my main uh reason for coming out today was, number one, to thank Mike Asale for responding some of the concerns I had last time. I shared with him a story of Halal Food Junkie's brother, I don't want to say his name, and how he had gotten a certificate of completion eight years ago, but then subsequently was able to complete a GED thereafter, meaning that the district failed in um allowing him to get the GED before pushing him out of the schools. As a result of that story, Mike has assured me that he will actually be reviewing all of the COCs and that this will change some lives of some of the students that are in there. So I truly do appreciate his response and willingness to work with me. The other thing I wanted to talk about was misinformation. Some of you had stated last time there was misinformation about the contract with the video surveillance, and I do agree, but not in the same, uh, from the same stance that you're taking. This agreement was being sold to us as protecting our children from active shooter situations, but the contract actually reads that it is open to all criminal or potentially criminal activities. I read it over and over. If this was supposed to be used to protect our, our children from active shooters, then why does it not make this exclusive to active shooters? Why is the verbiage made so general and so uh open-ended as to say any crime? There is nothing in the actual agreement that says this is only for active shooters or even dangerous or serious crimes exclusively. If this is to protect our kids from active shooters, then why does it leave our most vulnerable children and age groups unprotected? Why is it only targeting the high schools? Ask yourselves, why aren't you protecting kindergartners and third graders with this contract? Did you conveniently forget Sandy Huck? Do you realize that more than a third of school shootings occur at elementary levels, elementary school and lower education levels? Why have they been left out? It's pretty clear that it's blatantly evident that this is being used to target high school students into compliance with whatever district rules use or are in place, using the police as punishment. The district is purposely manipulating my fears as a mother over the safety of my child being a victim of school shootings to open the door for twenty-four-hour police surveillance of minors, minors in high school. You guys are the ones guilty of misinformation. This is strictly being put into place to penalize kids under the guise of active shooting prevention. Examples of such criminal activities could include senior pranks, um you know, any fights that occur, um smoking on school property, um you know, stealing cars if you play a prank on a friend. Um, and I've had these exact instances told to me by, by other former students. Instead of getting away from punitive measures and focusing on preventative measures, you are allowing this district to creep that much closer to giving lifelong criminal sentences to kids or records to kids. This is what is called a pathway to prison.
Please wrap up.
Sure. Um, besides the blatant privacy concerns I have as a parent and extreme overreach that the district continues to exhibit, I'm learning that the system also uses facial recognition. If you don't know what the problems are with that, I suggest you ask Detroit. And lastly, about accountability, if you want to talk about accountability, police head says lock it or lose it. However, with this contract, you guys do not lock your virtual system. You guys say, we'll audit it later. Then let's change Dearborn's policy to lock it or audit it later. My demand as a parent is that you retract this contract and fix it by tomorrow. I will be personally attending the city council meeting to advocate against the contract, and I know others will as well. And I promise with whoever comes in with the next administration, I will continue to advocate for its repeal if it stays this way. Thank you.
Thank you.
We do have virtual comments. Uh, the first comment is anonymous, uh but doesn't mention the name, so I will summarize it. Uh, representing eighth grade at Salina Intermediate, mentioning that similar to Ms. Mackey's story of a student who was a close contact and was asked to quarantine for ten days and was not given, as the parent was saying, was not given work or, uh, in their words, stuck at home uh for, for the ten days. And that there should be some options for students who are in quarantine because of close contact or return them to school uh with a negative test. We have the second comment from Mr. Jad Zuhair. Said hello, I would like to ask the board to try to create an environment that will enable nonprofits and other community organizations to thrive and encourage their growth throughout our communities, including boy, girl scouts, life skills programs, educational programs. These are so great for our children. Thank you. And uh, the last comment was by Ms. Samra Lookman, who already spoke here.
Uh, one quick comment about the virtual uh comment cards. Uh, we had received an opinion from our legal team of a month or two ago uh that once we got far enough past the, what they might have called the pandemic, that the virtual uh comment cards didn't need to be allowed anymore. We've chosen to continue to allow virtual comments. We know some people are not comfortable being in person yet, and they still want to be able to participate, and that's their right. So we're continuing to allow the virtual comment cards. The one thing that has changed is that we have to wrap up the virtual comments by seven o'clock. Previously, they were able to, to keep going until we were done with citizen participation. So that's one change that we made. Uh, we still want to let people have a chance to, to speak. But just like we asked for the in-person comments to, comment cards to be turned in by seven-ten, uh, it wasn't fair that the uh virtual ones could keep going until we were done with comments. So I just wanted to mention that one.